Billings for it, we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, question on the rule?
Justine Adams.
Here.
Justine Taggary.
Here.
Justine Wissel.
Here.
Justine Gifford.
Here. Privilege of the floor, would anybody like to speak of privilege of the floor for anything except the local law's special ones? Seeing none will close that. Item four is the Section 8 rental assistance plan, Terry?
Thank you very much. Well, thank you for having me, first of all. My name is Terry Ray, I'm a representative for Josephine Mastriani. We run the Housing Choice voucher for the village of Scotia. What that program is, it's a program that was developed by the HUD. It is a government program, so all the money for this program comes directly from the government. The program size in the village of Scotia is 92, so we are able to assist 92 families with this Housing Choice voucher. Currently, there are 91 families receiving assistance, so the program is pretty much utilized. The waiting list gives preference to families that live or work in Scotia or Glendale because it is a shared waiting list. The waiting list is going about a little bit over four years right now. So statistically, in this program, once a family receives assistance, they're eligible to participate in other programs. One of them is the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. That's a program that helps families gain self-sufficiency. It is a five-year contract. For example, if there is a single mom that has a child and can't go to work because she doesn't have daycare or doesn't have transportation, the coordinators help the families with the barriers that are stopping them from working, and they give them tools so that they're able to start to gain employment. When you receive assistance from this program, it's all based on income, so the less income a family makes, the more HUD pays. When a family starts to work, HUD starts to pay less. When they're in the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, the difference between what they started at and what they're currently doing is placed aside in an escrow. The families are not allowed to touch that unless they graduate from the program or they need money from that escrow to keep them working. So if their car breaks down and they need a car to work, they can ask the coordinators for some money to pay for their car. But the money isn't theirs just because they want it, they have to fulfill the contract. If they graduate, which means they gain full-time employment and they are free from welfare assistance, the money is theirs to keep. Typically, when families that are working are on this program, it's just a matter of time that they're off the program, because if they graduate from Family Self-Sufficiency, they're working full-time, they make too much to qualify for the program, so they end up leaving the program, which makes room for other people to participate in this program. So there is another program that was developed called the Home Ownership Program that is actually working with the Family Self-Sufficiency Department so that people are able to purchase a home. It can take up to three years to be eligible for a mortgage, and our coordinators work with the families to purchase a home. In Scotia, there are actually four participants that were able to purchase a home, so instead of that money going to a landlord, it is helping them pay their mortgage. Right now, the program is pretty much senior. Eighty percent of the people participating in this program are seniors. Typically, when seniors are on the program, they're on the program for a very long time. So working families are on the program a lot less than elderly or disabled. So that is pretty much an update on what's going on with your program. Is there any questions?
So how many people do you have on the waiting list? You said it was four years.
There's 142 people on the list, but the program is full, and the only way to offer assistance to new families is either for the government to give us more funding, which they're not, or to wait for folks to drop off the program so another family can participate.
Thank you. Thanks, Sir Good.
Thank you.
Okay, item five, Local Law Number 2018A relating to authorizing investment value of local contracts. Something I learned about it, but not copying this weekend, and something we ought to do. Is there anybody who would like to be heard on the Local Law 2018A? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six, Local Law 2018B relating to stock and yield intersections. Is there anybody who'd like to be heard on Local Law 2018B? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven, Special Use Permit for 184 Second Doggo Road. Is there anybody who'd like to be heard about this 184 Second Doggo Road?
Is that the gas station? Oops, sorry, go ahead.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm the architect for that project and I'm right as a civil engineer. I think you have all the documentation. We have presented before in the town planning meeting as well.
We had it before, yeah.
Yes. Everything was approved on the planning side?
Uh-huh.
And the building inspector has all the drawings of where we're at at this point, waiting for approval from the press team.
Just update you on, in the public, since this is a public hearing, on what the applicant is proposing to do. The applicant has acquired the small triangular piece of land adjacent to the Sitco Station and is looking to add an additional pump island with two pumps, relocate the propane tank away from the residences to a little more centralized location that's easier access with parking, that type of stuff, and do a better configuration of the dumpster island, as well as just a small outdoor storage shed on the back to allow for some additional storage of dry goods. The parking lot will extend around this area here. They're putting in all new underground storage tanks in that area as well, and basically, for the most part, a better, more efficient and structured parking plan for the facility. The proposal, as part of the approval, required the extension of the sidewalks, which terminate here along the front of Second Doggo Road and a crosswalk across Elver Marlborough Road as well, so that will also be provided.
Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to be heard on?
Yes, can we see that?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to see it.
Yeah, come up to the microphone and state your name for the record.
My name is Joseph Sanford. I am the neighboring property of...
Okay, can you go to the microphone so I can...
Thank you. All right, so where are we here?
I'm Kelly Laurenti, I'm the property owner and you sent the property question.
Nice, hang on one second. One person, yeah, let's do one more time.
Okay, so this is where they want to put the storage shed.
It's a very small one.
What's the dimensions of that?
It's this way.
Hang on one second, because our purpose here is just to approve the pumps or not pumps.
Okay.
Which has already been approved by the planning board, so we're...
Okay, well, my property borders that property, so with that being said, I do, unfortunately, I wasn't able to develop the pictures in time. The project that they had started last year...
It was approximately one year ago.
Almost a day, almost a day.
Yeah.
Okay. There's still debris from said project, still piled in the backyard, pallets. The first thing they did to start that project was cut a tree down, which is still in the middle of the lawn. When I look out my bay window, you know what I see?
Which faces...
Garbage.
To put in perspective for the board, our bay window faces toward the triangle in question.
When I looked out, when I looked out my picture window prior...
That is, that our main view from our home will now be the other one.
I used to see grass, now I see air and heat.
And again, it's been one year they haven't yet taken it up from the initial project that they've started, so when we heard that they were hoping to start another one, which seems like it will be a much more invasive to the neighborhood project, we had definitely some concerns. Again, our main view looks out to this area, we have small children as well.
Which are many in the neighborhood.
I have a three-and-a-half-year-old and a 14-year-old as well. As a mother, I have several concerns about inviting Mack trucks and whatnot that I understand, you know, we frequent corporations' parks that are coming from out of state that may not be Scotia residents, that don't understand our small-time values. It's across the street from the school, there's a ton of small children in our neighborhood, and I think that it creates many safety concerns for those of us that live in this neighborhood and area. I, again, my home is right there, my windows are open, as you all know, it's been beautiful out for the last two weeks, I'm sure you've all had windows open in your home. The idea of smelling idling diesel trucks all day doesn't excite me as a Scotia resident. I was actually born and raised here in Scotia, I decided to purchase my home because I went to Scotia High School, it's my alma mater, and I'm very proud to be a homeowner where I grew up and have lived my whole life. As you guys know, Dairy Circus has burnt down, they've rebuilt, much larger, and we're happy to see them back in business as a member of Scotia, they've been very generous as far as that goes, we were invited to these meetings as far as that goes as well. These guys, like I say, they've always met good neighbors to us, they've always been gracious, they used to let us use a portion of the bad property to grow our gardens, which they know, you know, that we do value that scenery, and as a lot of you may even have seen, we've grown giant pumpkins on that property, we used to grow giant giants. We are still planning to use our portion of that section as a garden. We eat the food from that garden. So again, as the homeowner whose property is sharing, I share the property line, I have several concerns. Like I say, I wasn't even aware that they were planning on changing tanks, stupid issues, so many different concerns that I have as a homeowner.
Another thing, it was brought to my attention, two things were brought to my attention, one of which is the soil that is on that triangle was contaminated soil that was dug from the old gasoline tanks and was then capped as protection.
Yeah, it was our understanding, that's why that property hasn't been able to be used previously.
So my question is, were cropless soil samples taken to find out if they unearthed this, are they going to release contaminants into the air? I'm a homeowner, we're across from a school, many of my neighbors all have children, small children, 14 and younger.
Our neighbors across the street have more than four small children that live and frequent their home. The gaddis running at home with daycare two doors down, there's just, there's a lot of , you know, obviously Lincoln School is on the same road, we've got school buses and schoolchildren constantly crossing the street there, and I don't know that inviting not only more traffic, but more large dangerous semi trucks, which are frequent diesel tanks into our neighborhood, and again, keeping in mind that Elver Marlborough is not one of our approved roads in Scotia for those trucks. And although there is a rear exit leading out onto Elver Marlborough, it's not one that should be used by these vehicles. So again, these are just some of the concerns that I have as a neighbor to the property, and I know there's other people from our neighborhood that probably would like the opportunity to speak as well.
One more thing I'd like to say is, moments before we walked into here, it was brought to my attention that many people in the neighborhood that didn't know that this meeting was taking place today are going to file a petition, and was asked of me to ask for a postposal, a postposal. Postposal? Yes. Sorry. Of your vote until they could obtain that, adjourn it to your next meeting, and then we could present that as well. And I found that out as we were coming in.
And just one other minor inconvenience, again, as someone who, although their business closes at 11, it's my home 24 hours a day, I, you know, there's going to be at all hours of the morning while it's still dark, and all hours of the evening, you know, when a time gets dark at 4 o'clock, and I'm going to have semi trucks up. A semi truck, I, across from my bay window, headlights, taillights, I feel it's an invasion of my home, and I feel that that's unfortunate, because up until this, I very much enjoyed my home in Scotia. So I think the word takes that into account.
Okay, I think we get the point. I wish you brought this up with the planning board, because this is...
Well, this was our first notification that this was happening.
This was the first meeting that I had been notified by mail for, because I would have loved to have been able to have been more involved previously.
Before you go, next time to, you know, if you have a complaint with anybody in terms of, you know, leaving garbage out for a year...
Well, we've been trying to be heard eagerly about it, we've just, you know... Yeah.
But the building inspector does that for a living, so I mean, you can measly, you know, cut that to the village and it would be pretty good about taking care of it.
Unfortunately, it's been an eyesore for a year for our neighborhood, and to know that they now want to just continue to...
Well, if they do that from here on, just call the village, because that's what we're here for.
All right, thank you.
Now, Lydia, what we're voting on, does it have anything to do with...
I also wanted to speak.
We haven't closed it yet, so...
Okay.
You're voting on whether or not to allow the gas pumps, not really for the rest of the layout of the project, but when it's...
And again, as a neighboring property, it's the construction of the triangle, which is where my bay window, the focal point of my home, looks out on, and again, it will create, you know, most of the inconvenience for me, that is a large portion of my concern and the tour they plan to go on.
Okay, so who else would like to be heard? Yes? Before you do, what's your address?
119 Elver Marlborough Road.
And your name?
Kelly L Laurenti.
Kelly?
Kelly L Laurenti.
All right, this is...
Thank you.
You got it? Okay.
Hi, my name's Tammy Marshall, I'm at 134 Elver Marlborough Road. Hi, I will say, I did hear about what I thought was the first meeting. I had been in some contact with the mayor and the building inspector, and I wanted to say thank you to them. The first, what I think is the first meeting, I was not able to reach. The second meeting, which I think was where the more important stuff happened, was in between board meetings, so I didn't catch that meeting, I didn't know that meeting was being held, until the mayor emailed me about this meeting and said that we could be heard at this meeting in regards to the permit. I did want to say that the owners, the gas station looks nice, and I understand the debris doesn't look nice, but you guys have been wonderful, your staff is wonderful, you know, we do like you, but I do have some concerns as I'm directly across the street from the island. I actually measured it, and the island to the front of my yard is 31 feet, from the front of my yard to my door is 25 feet. So 56 feet approximately, this is from my front door, from my bay window, where my window's open where me and my child live. So my concern is that it's that close. I also had a concern with the crosswalk, it's right at the island, and I think that's a huge safety issue with the kids. We have all different ages of kids, they cross constantly even after school for sports, they frequent the gas station, they frequent Giovanni's, they sometimes hang out at the gas station parking lot, as we all that live there know. If they're walking close in front of these tractor-trailers when they're parked just before they take off, they're not going to see them, and I know this because I've seen it happen. I was actually a passenger in a tractor-trailer, and we were at a red light, and the driver, the light turned green, the driver went to take off, and the truck wasn't moving quite like it should. And we see this little antenna just flopping, it's a little compact car, didn't see it, just pushing it along. That could be a kid. Even the teenage kids would be shorter than a tractor-trailer. It's being built on the aquifer, which is a concern. I've also heard the same thing about the soil. I have, and I have not been able to confirm that, but I've heard that, so that is a concern. I'm wondering if it has been tested before it's disturbed, especially because, like I said, it's only 56 feet from my front door and my front windows. With the current gas station, even with my windows closed in the winter, you hear the running cars, you hear the music blasting, you hear the doors slamming, and yes, I bought this house knowing that that gas station was there, and I would have to deal with that, but now it's going to be 56 feet away from my front door, where me and my child live. What's that going to be like? How much more noisy is that going to be? They have the delivery trucks that sit in the parking lot, and they just run when they're delivering their product, and the doors are up and down, up and down, 6:00 in the morning, 7:00 in the morning, you know, what are the deliveries going to be to the storage unit that is going to be there? Depending on how the cars park in the current parking lot, the headlights shine right through my front window. What's it going to be like at this parking lot when vehicles are parking in there and leave their cars running and their headlights on? I understand they can't make people shut, you know, their lights off and their cars off, people should, but as you know, this is what people do, and this is what I'm going to have to be dealing with. The sign, the current sign that is at the gas station is so bright, some nights it's shut off, most nights it's left on, it's so bright that it lights up, not grade where you can read, but it lights up my living room, shining through that front window. What are the new signs going to be like? What are the lights on the canopy going to be like? How's that going to be shining into my window? That, again, is only 56 feet away from this island. The tractor-trailer's running, we're going to be smelling diesel, we're going to be smelling gas. I'm not quite sure where the propane tank is being moved to, as I haven't seen the drawings, but if it is going to that island, again, that's going to be right in front of my house, and it's going to create more traffic, 56 feet from my door. That's really close to have that kind of business going there. The reconstruction of the gas station took so long, as they said, and you had to endure the hammering, the construction, all the noise for so long. How long is this going to take? Where's my peacefulness going to be? Is it going to take away the whole summer? Again, because it's so close to my house. What about the construction dust? How is that going to be contained? As my windows, again, are right across from where the site's going to be, what are me and my child going to be breathing in from this construction site, especially from the soil? What about small spills? You know there's always small spills, there's a little bit of gas, there's a little bit of oil, and people are putting the oil, and eventually that's going to build up and build up, and again, it's right across from my house and where, as they said, many children live and play and ride their bikes. Could the construction create a problem with the water lines? I'm somebody who had some construction done, and coincidentally, or not, their water lines, they were old and they broke right after. Can the digging and the jackhammering and stuff like that, can it put cracks in the old water lines that are going to my house that I'm going to have to be responsible for? If it was on the island at the time I was looking for a house, I would not have bought the house because of all these concerns. I'm sure it's going to drop the value of my property if and when I decide to sell it in the future. It's also probably going to make it hard to sell in the future. I'm wondering what the timeframe is for the construction of the project, since the last one was so long. I was asking what the timeframe was for the decision, but I guess that might be happening tonight, but I'd appreciate, like they said, being able to hear other people, and I just want to say thanks for giving me the time to speak and listen.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to be heard? You guys got anything you'd like to say with what they're talking about?
I'd be happy to answer any questions that were raised, you know, by the board or raised to the board, that the board has concerns about. What we're here seeking tonight is especially to the amendment to the special use permit for this part, so we did go through the site planning process, it was, you know, it was a rigorous process, it was, I think, three meetings, and, you know, this planning board, you know, we spent a lot of time moving things around and adjusting things to their liking. It's the, as far as the soil contamination on the site, it's...
It's tested. It's tested and it's okay.
It's tested, it's okay. My, what I anticipate they did with the, when they probably removed soils, they, what they do for volatile organics of the, from the, from the gas is, you basically sunmake it and let it dry, that's one of the ways to treat the soil, is to allow it to dry, it's probably what they did at the time, tested it, it's clean, they covered it up. It is not something that disturbing those soils would contaminate nearby properties, it's contained within the soil if there were any contaminants in there, but it has been tested and there are no contaminants in those soils. As far as, I know there's been a lot of discussion about semis and tractor-trailer trucks, they're adding a pump island, it's not specifically for trucks or trailers, they do have diesel on the site now, they're continuing to have diesel. One of the, one of the big things driving this is they want to replace their existing underground storage tanks before they have a problem with the underground storage tanks. So that's part of what's driving this whole process, is to put in, you know, the larger tanks and add the island and abandon, remove the old tanks in accordance with DTC standards.
They're actually being proactive to do that, so that they don't have to, they still have time to replace them, but they're being proactive in replacing them. There were some concerns about the lighting. Actually, we did submit new signage, new lighting with the town board and explain to them what it is, and it was approved by the town board. It's a reduction of light now from where it is right now, so the new signage on both canopies and lighting would be different and reduced as well.
Excuse me, can I clarify one of the things that he just said? Can I ask a question?
Sorry?
Can I ask a question, just in, one of the things that he just said is that they were planning to then make null and void the tanks that are, or the pumps, excuse me, that are currently in use? Is that what you were saying, that in the long run, those ones will no longer be there, and you want to move those to the other one, once the underground is replaced?
The existing pumps will remain, the tanks themselves that are underground right now are being replaced.
And one other thing I would like to say is that although, obviously, when you hear diesel, you do think semi truck, but irregardless of what type of traffic it is, I think that the neighborhood agrees that it doesn't change the fact that those vehicles will be idling with their lights on, creating more traffic and a more dangerous situation in what is a very small neighborhood full of children by the town's design, because it's between a high school and an elementary school. So I don't think whether it's semi trucks, minivans, or compact cars, that that really changes the situation, it's more the placement of where it is in relation to the homes that will be affected by it. How tall is the canopy going to be? Is it going to allow tractor-trailers to fit underneath? Because I'm not sure how many diesel vehicles we have.
Can I, can I ask you a question? Just to clarify, all that has already been determined by the planning board and approved. Tonight, we are only looking for the special use permit of the pumps, correct?
That's correct.
Correct? So that's all we're voting on tonight? That's already been approved? So I don't, I know that in the process, this may be, I, I, I value your concerns, but I think in the process, that's already been approved and it's going to happen. It's already been approved. They're just looking tonight for the special use permit of the pumps, is what we're voting on, because most of these decisions are not done by this board unless there's an exception like a special use permit, and I don't, I know you want to voice your...
So correct me if I'm wrong, and only with your permission this evening, only if you vote yes for them, will they be allowed to put the pumps in the triangle, correct?
Tonight is only about the pumps. The lighting has already been approved, the soil sample's already done. All that was done by the planning board, we're only looking exactly at the placement of the pump, correct? What's the...
Not yet. I think we agree, is that I think what our, what our issue is, so I'm not sure...
The new pumps, adding pumps, adding additional pumps.
Right, and again, that seems to be our concern as well, so...
Okay, I think, is there anybody else who has something new to say? Okay, so we're going to close the public hearing. We need to do a secret determination. Can I have a motion for...
Make a motion.
A second.
Justine Adams.
Yes.
Justine Taggary.
Yes.
Justine Wissel.
Yes.
Justine, yep.
Yes. Okay, then we need to decide on a, do we decide on a special use permit? I don't think we have a motion for it, I guess.
Motion to approve the special use permit that's presented.
Sure.
Make a motion.
A second.
I'll second.
Do I have any comments?
So the placement of these pumps, if I remember correctly, is going to be on the, it's going to be on the island, correct?
Right.
Well, and the ones they've got already, yeah. But the service, I mean, they're still going to have the same stuff that they've got now, just more pumps.
And the canopy and everything is designed so it does not attract 16-wheelers? Is that the...
It is, and you can explain. The canopy, I don't think, is any higher. They addressed the lighting, and the lighting's being toned down. There's signage going up regarding trucks.
Yes, there's signage going up on Albemarle as well as Huxar regarding the truck traffic, so they don't turn down those streets. That was something the planning board did address. The location of the pumps actually is on the existing parcel, but because of maneuvering vehicles around, the parking lot does extend out, the tanks themselves, and the parking lot extends into that island area, that new parcel. And as far as the canopy height, it is a height that a truck could get underneath it, and there are diesel pumps there. It's not their primary sale goal, but most of the fuel that they have on site is unleaded fuel for vehicles. But they do have diesel, like almost every gas station in the area today.
Just want to clarify one thing. The canopy is not in the triangle.
Yeah.
So just so that it's clear.
The canopy, so it's only open, like...
No, it's not in the triangle parcel.
It's in the old...
It's in the old parking area.
It's pretty much in the old parking area.
It's pretty much...
So I've never been a truck driver, I'm surprised. I've never driven a truck. Is it, is it going to be, if I'm a truck driver, is it enticing for me to go get gas there? Or would it be a deterrent? Is there anything deterrent other than the signs and things you're talking about?
I don't think it's inviting, to be honest.
I think so.
Because it's not a very friendly turn for them, so it's not really inviting.
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
Can I say, I was part owner of a tractor-trailer, owner-operator business. That's how I know about the vehicle, because it was the person I was with which was driving. That would be highly attractive with corporations to drive right there.
Right, the corporate coni guys, we're all from Georgia. Corporations park is like an eighth of a mile up the road. Of course, that's who they're marketing to.
I can appreciate your concerns, because honestly, you had your chance to speak, and I appreciate that, but this isn't entirely an open discussion.
Okay, I don't know, that's how it works. That's what we're doing.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, I realize that, so that's why I'm really trying to take your concerns and trying to find out based on the vote right now.
And you asked about a P, so I missed, I didn't know you were just talking to him. I thought that...
Yeah, based on the vote right now, at least, on what I heard you say is what I'm trying to determine, because...
Okay, I apologize.
...I listened to value of what you're saying, so.
I apologize, I agree.
So again, it's not, it's not inviting for a tractor-trailer to...
Karen, most of those trucks usually, from what I know, will go down to Roddy and the pilot truck stop, and they fill up over there, because they have, they're preventing diesel fuel...
Well, I was down in Long Island the other day, right near Subway, and a, it was a Target truck was trying to come up that, that, that street, and he disturbed traffic, like, I didn't think it's...
A lot of times, that happens.
But I'm just thinking, if he's taking that turn, coming up that street, where's he going to stop now?
I think we're getting off topic here, though.
Well, no, I think it's right on topic, because that's with the pumps.
Well, and I don't think canopy is only 24 by 24. It's not a huge canopy, 24.
What was that?
It's the same size canopy as it is right now, so 24 by 24.
And they don't come now?
It's not really a big canopy doing by trucks.
If I'm being honest, the existing pumps that they have now would be here for a tractor-trailer to negotiate than the new pumps, because they have to make a full 90-degree turn into the site to get to the new pumps, and then exit Albemarle, take a left, and then try on that circuitous narrow intersection on Sack and Dog, which is skewed, to try to turn out ahead. You know, it would be, it's not a, it's not an easy turning movement for any articulated vehicle. Okay, that's, because I'm assuming that, but I just wanted to clarify.
That's why I'm saying, most of the trucks are incorporated, those are the pilot and the Roddy.
Yeah, okay.
It's easier to get in and out.
Well, I agree, because I know you know that kind of stuff. That's why I ask, I do not, so. I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Anybody else? Call the room?
Justice Nattis.
Yes.
Justice Tiger.
Yes.
Justice Rizzo.
Yes.
Justice Hitler.
Yes. Okay, so that is the end of our public hearings on the various topics. If anybody's here, doesn't want to sit through the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to go. You're also welcome to stay.
Thank you very much.
Well, good night, thank you.
Okay, we begin the hearing. Item number eight. We have a volunteer firefighter at the end of the house. Seems like a good guy who lives in the house of John Carter.
I'll make the motion at that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, item number nine. Resolution to the surplus of 2003 Chevy Silverado and 2006 Chevy Appala and 2010 Chevy Appala.
Take a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Item number 10. Resolution to approve the Scotia Business Improvement District Fund Year 1819 budget in the amount of $22,475.
Make a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number 11. Authorize the allocation and collection of the special assessments on the Scotia Business Improvement District and the June 2018 village tax bills.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number 12. Authorize the levy of unpaid inside-village February 2018 water sewer bills on the June 2018 village tax bills.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 13. Authorize the levy of unpaid Department of Public Works charges on the June 2018 village tax bills.
What you mean by the charges?
So this is any time that the DPW had to go and mow their lawn?
Oh, okay, okay.
Or in those...
They had to pay, they...
They were not...
Okay, thank you. I move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 14. Authorize the mayor to sign the June 1st renewal of the permanent workers' compensation plan for the village discussion.
I'll be due with that, I mean, it's about the same.
We had the $20,000 decrease in our funding.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Item number 15. Authorize the closure of Martinburg Street at 12:00 noon on May 23rd for the fire department chicken barbecue.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
And then I assume we'll put it back up again after. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 16. Designate the following events as village events for insurance purposes. The Memorial Day Parade, May 23rd. Cruising on the Avenue, June 17th. Have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 17, this is the most exciting part.
I'll go out and coffee first, once you're reading.
Okay. You got enough tape there? Okay. Village Scotia MS4 Annual Report Summary, May, March 2017 to March 2018. MCM number one. Public education. Stormwater pamphlets handed out to posters are available at the village clerk's office, DPW office, and building department office. Number two. Village water quality report postcard was sent to all residents and included a link to the village MS4 program webpage. Item three. The village handed out 20 stormwater brochures at the fire department open house on May 16, 2017, where a stormwater display table was set up. Approximately 150 people attended the event. Item four. The village manned the stormwater info table and operated the flood inundation model at the My Science Festival on November 10th and 11th, 2017. There were 2,160 people that attended the event. MCM number two. Public involvement and participation. Number one. The Schenectady County Water Quality Committee meeting. The village is represented at all 10 meetings each year. Number two. The MS4 annual report is posted in the village website and available at the clerk's office for review and comment. MCM number three. Illicit discharge detection and elimination. Number one. All 23 storm sewer outfalls have been mapped within the village. 11 were inspected for dry weather discharges. The CFPs were being discharged. None were found. None was found. And number two. The entire village storm water, storm sewer system is mapped using GPS technology and can be viewed on the Schenectady County Internet Mapping System. MCM number four. Number five. Construction site and post-construction control. Number one. During the program year, there were no new projects requiring SWPVP reviews, and there was one project under construction that required SWPVP inspections to be performed. How that was completed. Number two. The village inspected four post-construction stormwater management practices that are owned by the village several times each, several times during the year. Maintenance was performed as needed, including mowing of the grass areas. MCM number six. Municipal operations. Village employees continue to be trained to implement best track, best management practices and erosion and sediment control to avoid stormwater pollution in their duties at the DPW garage and their field operations. 5% of the village DPW building and code enforcement department and parks department staff were trained this year. During the past year, the village streets were swept five times each for a total of 208 miles cleaned and approximately 10 acres of parking lots were swept. Cash basins were inspected and cleaned as necessary for a total of approximately 25 cleanings, approximately 5% of the system. The parks department applied minimal amounts of fertilizer in village parks and none near Appalas Lake to help combat high phosphorus levels. Okay. Thank you. Item number 18. Mayor's comments to the board. Mayor Casper didn't leave me anything to read for that. I just wanted to say in public that my com meeting this weekend was very useful for me, and I consider that a great resource we need to keep using in the future. Item 19. Correspondence liaison and special committee meetings.
The bid hosted a mixer this last week. Unfortunately, it was named to attending for rent that night, but I heard it went very well. It was very well tended.
Okay, Joe?
We've got a meeting this next Monday with the Park Board. I'll meet our board next month. I was going out. I think they're getting a schedule set up. The group's all set up and taped for it. That's all I have.
Visiting the village has come along strong. I, you know, from the bank today, and they said that a couple realtors have reached out to them with listings, so I'm excited about that at the time.
I had a fire department meeting that was, well, we did have a back with the... Joe was at. Andrew, you in, too?
I was there.
You were there?
I was there.
You were there, I'm sorry. How could we forget?
I don't know. Someone's got a room.
Yeah. Then we did, didn't have a planning board meeting this month. The departmental reports. May I have a motion to accept the departmental report?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number 21.